Okay.
You send it in?
Of course, it's going to be sent.
Oh, I know. It's walking.
A few times.
Hello.
Okay, it's seven o'clock and we'd like to welcome our board meeting.
The space of America, to the global public's standards, on one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Mr. Anderson, Thompson, Mr. Shawnee, Mr. Jardina, Mr. Philso, Mr. Walter, Mrs. Molly, Erica Corsi, she is our junior planner.
Here.
And attorney.
You may have our government can welcome our new attorney, this is this first meeting tonight. This is Frank Charlie, he'll be our new planning attorney this year. Again, this is our organization, right?
Yes.
I'm going to generate and make a motion for the vice chairman.
I'd like to motion David Martha, the funded vice chairman of the Webster Planning Board.
Do you want to give a second?
I think I can.
All in favor? All right. I don't think we could do that. Dan, you have motion for a secretary.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mark Jardina as secretary.
Okay, that'd be a motion in a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Here we go. Or any doing business on the way. I want to get down to the facts, let's see. Mark, what, we go ahead, do you want to start with that first one here or is this solar?
Solar PV system, which is located at 1822 Lake Road, applicant Bell Beacher. The ACES Energy is requesting a 24.56 kilowatt AC ground mounted solar PV system consisting of 64 solar panels and 64 microwave and micro inverters on a five point acre parcel located in a large lot, single family residential district under section 26911 of the code of the town of Webster.
Is there anyone here for this? Oh, yes, I do. Tony, because I know you asked once already, Tony.
What's that?
We just wanted, since people, you may essentially ask, they're here for that. Part of you is in there that's supposed to fall. Yeah, we can, if anyone is here that came in for the Waterview project, that, that is asked to be tabled to a future meeting if that was converted. That's a little, but not a big deal. Just, just to clarify it to someone who's sitting there.
It's on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Steve McLojack, I'm with ACES Energy in Hunter Island Falls, and we're looking to do a solar system. It's a ground mounted system, it's going to be several hundred feet off the road, behind quite a few trees, setback from the adjoining properties quite a bit also.
Yeah, this, we actually were in last month.
Yeah.
Is that it? Just the way the circumstances worked, we do it at, and we're, you know, various, we're doing nicely, we could've just approved it. We've got the various volunteer, but I don't think, anybody have any issues that you need from the last meeting?
No.
No, we're all okay with it, that's I guess. You did a secret on this?
I've been in the last meeting, yes.
You did? You then do a motion, is it not a?
This is a public hearing.
Public, yeah. Oh, it is, right. Again, this is a public hearing, this is for all. A solar panel project down on Lake Road, is there any news you should speak to me about? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing for this project, we'll make that, okay? You guys all right, I'll make a motion for it?
I'm making a motion. The former director. Oh, what? Social, the installation of ACES, so we have two cabinets. Some, some information on CBA for requesting our resources. We're, we're all in the process of constructing a concrete specification and on a ledger.
Can't hear you.
All site work to be compliant with the standards of non-alegory. Comply with all requirements in East Lake, County and Town Agency. The rules are subject to drawing number, it's sheet number PB12.
Okay, that's your motion, continue.
Yeah.
Do I get a new second?
Thank you.
Have a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
The motions are final. For 1822 Lake Road, subject to five different cabinets, subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction for a hurdle in one year, approved by the planning board in January 2006. Conditions of preliminary and final approval are depicted on the cover page for the final design plans. After resolution of final three minutes, approvals are subject to drawing number sheet number PB dash one.
Okay, your motion, you said?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Mr. Allseth, thank you. Thank you, sorry for the delay.
Next item on tonight's agenda, in-law apartment located at 1235 Lake Walk. Applicant Daniel Noble is requesting an accessory apartment waiver associated with the construction of an 880 square foot addition. They located behind the existing garage, located on a 0.79 acre lot, located in an R1 single family residential zoning district under section 350-50E of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir. Hey, I'm Rich Chester, I am the property owner at 1235 Lake Walk along with my wife, Dawn. And we are requesting two waivers relative to the build of an accessory apartment that will be located behind our existing garage, added to the house to look as though it's always been there. The first waiver is relative to the overall size. And the second waiver is the placement of a front door, if you will, to the apartment.
Yeah, I saw where you were putting the door, I personally didn't see an issue with it. It really told me, you can have a front door, interest, should be separate, interesting, where they located is the, I had a problem with that. Square footage, you okay with that? It's exceeding. This one, just first, it's under eighty square feet, eight eighty eight. Square feet, it's a provision. So that falls within the parameters of the, of the, the code?
So, the code states that accessory apartment shall be limited to a maximum of 35% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, excluding the floor area of the accessory apartment, or 750 square feet, whichever is less. So, the applicant is within the 35%, but they exceed the 750 square feet, which is the reason for the second waiver.
Okay, so, little variances are anything of importance.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Just going through your application, you are architect, you're an engineer, did this?
I have our, I assist almost complete applications, I've seen them a long time. You did a really good job with that. Thanks, thank you, I'm Randy Teeton.
Hi, Randy.
Yes.
No, you did a good job with this, I'm gonna throw it all.
I can offer you a few reasons why we're at this size. We did try to look at an addition, that be a little bit smaller to fit within that 750 square feet. But, we're really attempting to incorporate some universal design for future handicap accessibility. So, the rooms are a little bit larger to allow for wheelchair access at some point in the future. And, there's some peculiarities of the house. Where this addition fits, behind the garage, there is currently, between the garage and the house, a, an area of the, the living space of the house, that is just over a crawl space, it doesn't abut the basement. So, we didn't really have the opportunity to make, it would be less efficient to put the mechanicals for this addition into the basement and make the long runs through the crawl space out into the addition. So, approximately 60 square feet of that additional 130 is a mechanical space for, for us, a water heater there. And the other, you know, you're looking at an area of 10 by 13 roughly, over what's permitted. And that gets eaten up pretty quickly, you can make the bathroom a little bit bigger to fit a wheelchair, and the bedroom a little bit bigger so you can run a wheelchair and access around the bed.
We, 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 we actually have your entrance, you have a sidewalk going inside the garage, right?
Correct, yes, yeah.
It's pretty over, it's kind of a little lot going down.
It's, but it's, as required by the code, this is also accessible through the house, so it's possible to go through the house. I think the entrance there on the side is, for the most part, designed to allow for a guest to come visit without having to go through the main house. That's why it's done with a little covered overhang area, so you can stand out of the rain when you ring the doorbell. And, and to be frank, it also gives us room in the future, if it were necessary, to build an accessibility ramp to run along the side of the garage to get up to that space, yes.
Okay, that's fair. Again, I, I, I don't understand, this has turned out well. I like what you're doing, Dave, then while someone, you're in a place like that, and it's pretty, you committed for that.
I've already heard from my mother, says, why aren't you building anyone?
I actually pulled it off, we're not even here, my son was sitting in the back, and somebody had the same thing going on here. I said, I hope my kids do this. Crazy, but anyways. Anybody, any concerns on this, Dave?
None whatsoever.
None.
Yes.
All right. All right, let's see. It's actually an accessory. All right. This would be, this should be a listed action under secret, so, no, no impact on the environment in this particular case. It's just an addition on the house, so I'll make a motion for negative debt.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right. Hi.
All right, good. Make a motion for approval for, you know.
1235 Lake Walk.
Or is it 1237?
1235.
1235 Lake Walk, the space. Addition, I make that subject to, I'm going to go through the sentence, according to the accessory apartment code. The size, maybe to 35%, I don't know, leave it one time. Infinity service, you're agreeing?
One service for the?
One service, if required.
One service for the house, sir.
Let's do it this way, we'll just, we'll show all the same page, and we'll just take it according to this court order code. Just to go back, I can see you're the builder that tell, builder that agree with the fee and substance, suitably according, we're in a county clerk's office, and there are variances, variances required. Okay, so, I'll make a motion that we approve the accessory apartment and make that subject to chapter 225, the zone, uh, the, uh, 225-491 accessory apartment code. Okay, we'll make it as simple as that.
Starting.
All right, have a second?
Starting.
Hi.
All right. Does it, do you have, do we have?
Just wait.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda, Bill Gray's signage located at 964 Ridge Road. Applicant Charles Kelly is requesting a conditional sign approval associated with the construction of two 100 square foot and one 180 square foot single face building mounted facade signs located on a 6.7 acre lot, located in a high intensity commercial zoning district under section 265-7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, good evening.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Gray from Bill Gray's Restaurants. Um, just, we're with you guys about a year and a half ago, talking about the, the front face of the building, before we completed the food store, and how to move on to the restaurant portion, and continue to extend to then the third tenant, as well as the post planning sign that we're asking for on the, uh, part of it.
Now, we look, I'm looking at the sign for the Milwaukee. My concern with the sign is, you have a, what, 20 foot?
Excuse me?
What we're talking about, the 90th side?
Uh, 15.
15? I think we did talk about maybe taking 10 foot, when you were in last November?
Uh.
You discussed it then?
We, yeah, we were just, I don't think we really set, we were set firm on, on.
Well, the last, well, the minutes, that's what we were fleshing out, that's what I was doing. Um, I guess my question is, why do you need a sign that big?
Well, we're just, we're just going based off of some of the surrounding areas, that, that signing up on the corner of Hard and Ridge is 20 feet high.
Does that 20 foot? That, that sign, that's 15 feet.
From the, from the base to the top.
But it also says down to the worst, no part of the grade too, it's like three feet lower than the road. And all the other signs along Ridge Road, they're all six foot, and they got, I went through them all today, I just took a survey of them.
It's a one on.
All six foot high.
The one on.
The one I'm doing is, it's a six foot high sign, and then you've got like 16 establishments in it, why don't we got four? So, when you're coming down Hard Road, I'm riding down Hard Road, Little Bridge, there you are. That sign is going to be a huge panel right by the entrance, sir. I don't, I don't know why, why it can't, why it can't conform, yes, but, well.
Down the other one.
You gotta let the mic.
You gotta go right, you gotta go north.
Go to the microphone.
Oh.
Yeah, go, use the mic, excuse your name.
I'm Charles Kelly, the general contractor, so, you have to go to the north for that, we're talking. It's not up there, it's down.
Yeah, the first sign is almost right there.
Yeah.
Right. And from, 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 from top to base, it's 20 feet.
No, I think they, they, well, okay, if you understand, I'll say it's 15, but it's lower than, it's even lower than the note. And that sign is a pre-existing, that can conform, that's before the code changed.
Okay.
So, that sign's been there for, under the URI, that's for sure. Uh, but the other ones are all six foot high, and to give a sign that big, what do you do with the next person that comes in? Because the code says, six foot. See, that's where I, the next, next week will have somebody come in, is anyone a 20 foot sign, you know? Try and keep things, the other, the other issue too, is, in our guidelines, refers to signage and so on, you know, planning, voting guidelines. And a sign is supposed to be like gold grays, like you had there, in the sign, but, Home of the Greatest Cheeseburger, is that necessary? That's not part of the sign. That's an advertisement out there.
It's part of their logo, it's part, yes.
Their logo, it's their other stores.
What's that?
It's part of our logo and brand.
Yeah, 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 you know, McDonald's have brands too, they have big golden arch, we got rid of that anyway. You know, so, how do we get things in perspective?
Well, I'd also like to make mention of this, based on how the building has been, uh, broken up, it's technically two spaces, well, that's what we're trying to say, it's two spaces, but not the same place. Bill Gray's has always been, especially with our, um, restaurant and taproom, they're two separate. They're always divided, so they've always been a clear, separate entity for both, we've always had signage that reflect both. Um, so that's kind of what we're proposing then, and obviously, Bill Gray's in the center, so, to show the side, the whole, that whole section is Bill Gray's, and one side is the restaurant, and one side's the taproom.
To Bill Gray's, I don't have an issue with, the two on the extremes, I, I, maybe if they were made smaller or something, but this is, we're pretty commercial stuff, see, and this is some of the things that we, according to the guidelines, since we got away from it. Now, we're referring back to this, you gotta understand.
A lot of this was still, this was originally proposed to you guys back in November, over a year ago.
No, I'm talking about.
We did a 3D drawing that had this on.
Yeah, and each one of the signs was present.
They haven't changed.
They're the same size.
The only real question was the monument.
I mean, it's everybody's decision, but I, if everybody goes with this, I'm okay, I'll go with it, but I'm, I'm just, it's against everything, and where's the hardship? I mean, you're going to get a variance next week, you're going for a variance with these things, and what is it, what's going to claim to be the hardship?
Well.
You're going to have to convince the board.
Okay.
Tony.
But is it difficult?
I would just like to mention that.
I'm sorry?
Discussing, the zoning board is not pertinent to this tonight, what they need next week, so let's try and maintain what we need tonight for the planning board.
Well, this has to give variance, though.
Correct.
Well, I'm looking down the road saying, what, how would the, gotta look at that side to know.
That's for the zoning board to decide, so, let's try and keep it within the parameters of what the planning board can do tonight. Okay?
Whatever. Excuse me? This is part of the parameters of the planning board, always that's it, is to look at what the future is, the next move for this, that's called planning. So, the next step for them would be to go to the zoning board. So, my question is, how would the zoning board, so, helps me to understand, how would the zoning board look at this to give a variance? See what I'm saying?
How much of a variance is the same question?
What's that?
How much of a variance is the same question?
Well, for the sizes, I guess, it's, it's oversized for the, and the number of signs on there, too. I think there's a, one, there's, you got three signs on that sign, right?
There's three there, yes. But you have two, you have two entities, you have the taproom, and you have Bill Gray's, right? So, they each get one sign. So, really, all we're looking for is.
It's an additional sign.
Is there some reference for each?
Yes, sir.
Yes, there is.
And based on most, how all our taprooms have always been designed, we make them separate for the fact that we try to keep more of an atmosphere on the restaurant side, and a taproom, or, you know, the smart sports bars, or keep them separate, to keep, to keep our both brands, you know, like that. It's just been the way we've done it for as long as you've built them. Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. The, the, the 10 foot signs, obviously, they're, so, that's, the point is that, of course, they're two separate entities, is, is I was saying, they're also, if we should, we reduce the size of those, that is kind of, the other, our tenants are 10 foot size, size, that kind of shrinking those would, wouldn't be very, wouldn't be aesthetic, you know, pleasing, personally, would kind of make everything kind of a base vegetable, across the way.
All right, anybody, any?
Also, then, the signs, actually, it's a sign for each different business. Taproom is a separate business.
Correct.
Bill Gray's is a separate business. So, there's a sign that's really.
And they're both, they both obviously fall under the umbrella of Bill Gray's, but they are two, like you said, two separate.
Are you going to include an address on the signs?
Uh.
964?
Hi.
Since the beginning of last year, we had, had numerous signs before us, and the overall perception of the board, at least, was to include the address, make it easier for people to find it, even though.
On the building.
Everybody has a tracking system in our life.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah, on the, on the, on the building signs, or on the monument signs?
Monument signs.
Oh, yeah. I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that should be one of the conditions if we're going to approve this, is that they include the number, the address.
So, as far as the building, back to the building sign, are everybody okay with the layout of that, the three sides of it?
I mean, I can take or leave the world's greatest cheeseburger, but that's apparently.
I don't remember ever seeing that under other buildings. The one in Greece, I don't think it has more cheeseburgers on it.
North Greece Road, it has it. Um, North Resort, it has it. Um, I, I think on, does Ontario have? Ontario has, the monument sign has Bill Gray on the building, it's the world's greatest cheeseburger on it.
Well, again, I'll just go back to where I just were saying earlier. You know, the guidelines specific to what a sign is, it's not very visualizing, it's for the name of the establishment. You guys are all okay with it?
I agree.
The monument sign, um, we talked at, at the end of this, the last time we were in, and the height of that, we went to a height of 10 feet. We cut it down to 10 feet, yeah.
I mean.
I mean, if we can, we can work with that.
We can work with 10 feet if we have to, but I, I.
With a different ton of, there you go.
I just don't understand 15 feet, every, every sign in town is 6 feet.
The only, the only, one of the reasons why we did this, because I got a walk, went down to the corner by Hard Road and the Whitewaters, uh, where you go into where, um, Hamantia is and everything, that's, that's 15 feet tall. I, I, I'm just saying, I, I mean, maybe I mentioned them wrong, but I.
That's, that's, that, that sign is for like Lowe's and that, and the whole kind of.
Understood.
And you have a base, you have a base before in that figure, I mean.
Right, no, I, I meant, I meant from the, yeah, we, we can lower the, we.
Oh, yeah, we cut it together.
Lower the base.
You have a 32 inch base, and then the sign goes up from there.
Right.
So, I mean, we're, if we can modify it.
Sure you can, I mean, that's, that's.
It's just, but again, we're trying to, the tenants that are going to be in there, obviously want to be advertised, make it easy and visible for, you know, people to see it, and to come up, and it's a busy road.
But if you eliminate the base or make it smaller, you can get in 10 feet.
We, we could adjust it to get where we're 10 feet overall.
Came back to what I, the point that I raised, where would you put the numerical address on this sign?
Oh, we could, yeah, I mean.
We would just put on the side.
Probably on the side of it.
We could modify, do, we'll modify, either on the, either.
Michael?
Would they have Mike?
Mike's from Skylight Side, say do all ours.
Yeah, you can, you can put the address right along, right down the side of the, the side view.
Okay, um, my X-ray vision isn't working tonight, I can't see the pillars, so.
I, I, hold that.
On the side of the image.
This is the side view.
Right here.
Yeah, right down on the side there.
Because that's facing, that'll be facing Hard Road.
Okay.
Is that double sided, the side or what?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Double sided. One lit.
Excuse me?
Interior lit?
Interior.
Yes.
Yes, low voltage, W D.
All right, 10 foot?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you put the numbers on top of Bill Gray's, so that it's heading east on Ridge Road, you could see it?
We can.
We can certainly do that, but again, we want us to lower the sign, so that'll reduce the size of the tenants' panels, so.
But you got 10 feet you're working with, what am I missing here? Everybody's got 16 signs.
We can.
Six foot high.
Anything you need, sir.
Yeah, we can, we can, we'll make, we'll make, we'll make adjustments, how would, how would you guys like to see the, um.
Well, I would, I would, I think, I think you can put it on the side, but I think on the face, that's what people were.
Okay.
Right.
If it goes on the face, sir, and we shrink the base down a little bit, then the snow is going to pile up against it, you won't see that.
Yeah, we, that's.
Having this base.
That's, that's a general story we were to be signed, it's been, somehow they all work, but yeah, you can lower it down, doesn't have to be 32 inches on the base, and if you weigh 18 inches.
Sure.
Snow never comes up on the wood anyways, I've never seen any of the cover. But it's just the size, but, okay, so 10 foot, you guys can look it out, quickly address on it.
Sure.
All right? Then we got you guys to dig.
Yeah.
You guys?
Yeah, that's fair.
All right, okay, all right. Your building, what do you want to do, you want to leave it as is, the way it's presented, you want to go to the zoning board, that's all.
Yeah, we'll look at the way it is.
All right, okay. All right, okay. Um, so we're gonna make a, all of that be a sticker on this. This will be a, no, this will be a type G, actually, negative, uh, that's what we're saying. Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And, sign, where's the, what motion for the sign?
I'll make a motion, uh, let's see here, for the Bill Gray signage located at 964 Ridge Road, um... We have 200, 200 square foot signs and 180, 180 foot square signs, and on the monument sign there, it's gonna be no longer than, taller than 10 feet, and we'll have the address on it. Got everything?
I'll second it.
Yes. Do we have motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, can we put all sign on? All right, this, you guys have to go to the zoning board.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
For item on tonight's agenda, Scottish Short Red Company sign located at 700 Ridge Road. The applicant Ian McDonald of Historic Signs and Restoration is requesting sign approval associated with the installation of one six-square-foot single case building mounted on the side side, located on a .46 acre lot, located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under section 265-7 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
Is there anybody here? Is this, is this... Uh, this sign is already up? Josh said, or somebody said, this sign is already in place, do you?
Um, from the rendering provided, it looks like it is, um, the building already.
It was already in place?
Yeah, yes.
So they put it up on our...
Who's something from the...
Okay, so they were actually... Can you do this without, can you do it? Well, you don't, uh, back to show, back to show for you.
Well, they're requesting this within a, that allows it, right?
It needs it.
It doesn't need any variances or anything like that, no.
So we can just approve it? Is it good? So, oh, we see this picture there, and that's all we got? Which one is it? Scottish Short Red Company. Is it the blue one, and is it the red one?
I think they should...
We should wait until they...
They should command. I mean, you have no idea what the sign is, or what color it is, or anything.
Yeah, I have no idea. Okay, all right, whatever, and come back. Table it to you, you, 7087. All right, so we'll table that to February... All right, well, you guys can go next one, I guess, Mark.
Okay, Legacy Games located at 803A Ridge Road. The applicant Jessica Costa, the vital signs, is requesting sign approval associated with the installation of one non-lit 26.6 square foot ACM W over the facade signs with digitally printed graphics to be mounted to the face of the building located on a 3.54 acre lot, located in a medium intensity commercial district under section 265-7 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
And just before we get on that, last coming forward, it's tabled for February 4th.
And we have little Jessica, all right? So, no, we do table this one also.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table the sign for Legacy Games to the February, what was it, February 4th Planning Board meeting.
Wait a second. Second? Okay, make a motion to be able to be short red sign to the February 4th meeting also.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Okay, next item on the agenda, Brahman Nature, Nature, excuse me, Preserve sign located at 1775 Ridge Road. Applicants Lola Wright, Genesee Land Trust, and Emma Oaks Costage are requesting a conditional sign approval associated with the construction of a 11.2 square foot double-sided freestanding permanent mounted sign on a 71-point acre parcel located in a large lot stable family residential district under section 265-7 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
Hi, I'm here.
Is there?
Yeah, somebody here.
We got somebody here today?
Mike Ritchie from Costage Engineering. Emma Oaks couldn't be here tonight, so, uh, doing it for her. We are proposing a freestanding sign for the Brahman Nature Reserve. Um, it's, the preserve itself exists, there's a parking lot that this board approved, I believe, last year, and it's essentially a walking trail. The property itself is on the south side of Ridge Road between Basket and Ridge Road Extension, and the applicant Genesee Land Trust is proposing one freestanding, non-lit sign. And I believe, uh, pictures of another nature preserve as an example was submitted, as well as the rendering of the sign itself. Yeah, that's an example right there of one on, I think, on Phillips Road, not Phillips, sorry, 8 Mile.
That's a road in my mind.
Right. So it essentially would be the same as that, but instead of the Goss, the Nature Reserve, it'll be the Eva and Harland Brahman Nature Reserve, and it'll have the Genesee Land Trust sign below it, so almost identical to that one. This did need to be, uh, sent over to the zoning board, because the code requires a 25-foot setback, and that would push it kinda into the woods, so we are proposing the sign to be two feet off the property line, and it's been submitted, and it's on the agenda for zoning board next week. So, uh, we're requesting site plan approval, uh, obviously conditioned upon receiving the variance from the zoning board.
Okay. When I was reading your paperwork, is the 23-foot signed setback variance requested with 25, so what you're looking for is to be two feet from the road, not, not 20, you're not looking for a...
Correct, we're looking to be two feet from the road instead of 25, as told.
Yeah, that was...
Right, so it's kinda backwards, I was written. And again, I think an error may have been submitted of the site itself, and, uh, you can see it's very heavily wooded back there, so if you were to set it back at the setback, it would be pretty obscure.
As for the previous applicant, um, do you have room to put down 1775 Ridge Road on this sign?
Uh, I believe they could, I'd have to check with them. I don't know if that required to come back to the board, or if that would be a condition of your approval. I'm sure they could add the address on the sign. You're just asking for the 1775 to be put on it?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that certainly can be added to the sign.
Something we came to an agreement last year about, uh, new signs coming out.
Just for...
Diversity of people.
Yeah, first responders?
Yes.
Yeah, and we can work with them, whether that's on the Genesee Land Trust portion one, or the one above it. They could just make it slightly, slightly larger to accommodate that.
All right. Um, okay, we, we can, we can look forward with our approval on this, but then make it, make it subject to, uh, zoning board, give a variance. All right, um, all right, I, I'll make a motion for a type 2 sticker on this. Make it with that.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion for the approval of the sign contingent, and the area that we see, the necessary variance is from the CBA.
Second? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, you're all set.
Next item on the night's agenda, Vision Auto Group located at 785 Ridge Road. The applicant Robert Sanders is requesting preliminary final site plan approval and a public hearing associated with the construction of a 1,400 square foot 50 by 20 inch enclosed addition for vehicle service area entry and building facade improvements on a 2.4 acre parcel located in a medium intensity commercial district under section 269-11 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, Link Sweetrock with PM Associates. Um, we've been here a few times, uh, due to Scotch Plan Review with you on this project. The project has, um, involved over the, some time, but it's, uh, as far as the building addition is consistent, it's 1,400 square foot building addition, um, for the new vehicle entry to the dealership, create a service area drop-off point, and then, uh, external improvements to the building. Uh, when we were initially here last year, um, the board had raised some concerns about the amount of vehicles on it and emergency access, as well as, um, the amount of cars and loading and unloading on Ridge Road. So, we met on the site during the Scotch Plan Review, we've been to a couple of different PRC comments. Uh, this plan, um, has been revised multiple times to try to address, um, the planning board's comments, as well as PRC staff comments regarding the access around the building. Some of the last comments that we've addressed from the PRC included the, um, additional sharrows around the site, no, we had a new parking line, uh, no parking, um, fire lanes. Um, we've identified all parking spots on there, and we've, um, also, they purchased, or they're leasing additional property where they're doing, where they're storing more cars and doing their deliveries from now. And, um, we also just, um, worked with the emergency access and graded out the areas where that is. So this hopefully will improve where people come in and they're dropping their vehicles off for me. It's the intent is for them to have somewhere to go or drop their car off, be able to drop it off, see somebody at a desk, and then, um, take off for their car to get serviced, or they can either park it in the back, or they'll take it directly into service. Um, I think I'm gonna keep it short, so I'm gonna just leave it at that. I think, um, like I said, I think we've answered a lot of the questions to this point, so if there's any other questions, well, do your best.
I think the biggest thing is, yeah, area that 18, that 25 foot on the side, that's the big issue we have, and we have not talked.
Yeah.
It's kinda tight, uh, you just can't park cars in there, it's gotta be, be made open. There actually is a fire lane that's going through there, too.
Yeah, so we've tried to...
The way we redesigned it, that's good, that works out well.
What, what improvements are you doing for the facade?
Um, basically, um, they're just upgrading it to the newest Nissan, um, requirements. I'm not great with the building materials, but, uh, it's a installation of new ACM metal building panels and a new SSG glass curtain wall system.
Did we ever get anything showing that?
Um, I have, you have, I have planned, I don't have colors, but I did submit the elevations with the, with the application of the, um, excellent, I think, has the elevations. So it does have, I do have elevations, I didn't have the materials or colors there, but I give you an idea of, um, basically, what they'll, what they'll look like with the efficient.
Can we talk about the facade, so, the front, yeah?
Yeah, right there.
Just wanted to make sure, was it gonna be something that from the... Could you call us or anything?
Yeah, it's, it's all the same material.
It's the same materials, it's gonna be consistent with their, the colors are just gonna change a little, um, to, to their new... I think they just try to keep things spuced up as they...
The intended addition is basically just to bring cars to get them into the service area.
Right, bringing, you're gonna pull your car directly in there, you're gonna drop your car off, and you're gonna head out and leave your car there for, um, service or whatever.
All right, this is, uh, this is preliminary hearing for this, and then, there's public hearing. If there is anyone here which is speaking before or against us. Not being any, well, it's a big hearing, but like that...
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
They're currently, uh, bringing your new car, you're storing them out in Ontario or someplace?
Believe they, yes, they got, uh...
Will they bring them in, are they gonna be driven individually, or are they gonna have a trailer, bring several cars into the time?
My understanding is they'll be unloaded there, and the cars will be driven from Ontario to the, so they're not loading and unloading on, on the trailer.
All right. Any other concerns, questions? David? No? All right, then, uh, I'll have to see if I, this, this would be an listed action, the negative deck. No one's bothering with the concerns on this project, give you a second?
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Concerned of the back is the puffer in the back, but they showed, didn't they, they did show where the puffer was actually the purpose of the, of the back. Didn't look like the initial, but it did conform. All right, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the, uh, vision. We're gonna approve, uh, 75 Ridge Road, um, as it's designed, as presented, and we can just make that, uh, make that, uh... There's no variances required, see, money being paid, supervision, all of this construct, so number eight. This is better, this is better. So no break, all of this conform, according to specifications of the town, uh, of the town. It's like work to be compliant with standards, conform. Yeah, that one, that was something. Let's see, the law on the car, it's a state company, or town agency, I think. Pretty much, that's pretty much it, as presented. We might add in there that no, no cars are to be unloaded on the road, and that the pass-through along the west side of the building is to remain open for the 25 feet, as shown on the drawings, so nobody goes parking cars in otherwise. It's gonna be a violation. Anything else you need, you have any to add? Okay, that'd be a motion, what you have to go with?
Who's setting up?
Somebody's setting up. Oh, I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Shine? Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Derso?
Aye.
And Mrs. Lawton?
Aye.
Okay, final approval, make a motion, final approval, make that subject to, uh, PRC comments, subject to all preliminary approvals, subject to all, and the applicant government fees, and subject to Department of Labor's approvals, and significant construction to commence one year from this date of January 7, 2026. Conditions are being, let's see, engineer, yeah. I don't know if you have a letter of credit through the town or this. I don't think so, I don't think so. Okay, I'll make it, I'll subject all engineering and town government approvals, I believe, with that. That would be it, that would be it. The final approval, new motion.
Second?
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Have a good one.
Next item on tonight's agenda, RGV Station 73 located at 891 Fun Road. Applicant Eric Thorne, RGV, is requesting an additional Scotch Plan Review of the plan revisions associated with the modernization of an existing electrical substation. revisions associated with the modernization of an existing electrical substation, including an expanded substation yard with a new fence, control house, switchgear buildings, transformer, and lighting on a zero point seven seven acre parcel located in an R-two single-family residential district under section two ninety, two sixty-nine dash five and three five zero dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening. Mary Stedline from the Bellas Associates, and I'm here tonight with Eric Thorne of RGV. I was wondering if you had the overall of the renderings. So we were here back in October of twenty twenty-four to get some initial feedback on the renderings of the proposed substation expansion. And we've come back with two options for consideration by the planning board. We have received some comments from the PRC as well. At this point, RGV would like to be able to move forward with further design and ordering of materials associated with the building and the perimeter fence line, which is why we kind of focused on those updates within the renderings and we have not yet really addressed the comments related to landscaping. Those will be addressed during design of the substation improvements. We have updated the quality of the building materials. They've chosen some different, different materials to give it a little more variation and color. And we also have modified the fence from the chamber fence that was provided before to a new high-security steel Palisade fence, which appears rather solid in the renderings, but when you look at it closer, it offers space in between the portions of the fence.
Why did you change the fence out? They're looking to see that, but the issue I have with this is, I said the last thing, the fence, I think, is an improvement over the chain link that you had there before, but the building still, I don't know, it looks like a prison.
Yeah, so.
I looked, I looked up, I looked up some residential designs for electrical substations and there's all kinds of them. They make them look like a house even. I mean, with a gable roof on it, it makes it, this is in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Sure.
So what can be done to make this thing look somewhat residential? I know you have to have a fence, I understand, but what can make that?
Yes.
This building, I don't know.
Again, a residential neighborhood. When you're looking at this, like it should look like the second story of a house.
That's what I'm saying.
It shouldn't look like this. There should be gable roof. There should be either false windows with shutters or windows with some shutters. So it looks like you're looking at the second story of a colonial town. Not this.
I think you hit the nail on the head. It does look like a prison or a gulag or something.
I only used the term, but I mean.
Well, it's, it looks like many.
Much like it's. Is there any?
Industrial complex.
Was it?
And it's not, you know, we don't want an industrial.
No, if it was an Indian industrial town, that's different, but you've got houses all around that whole, that whole area. Can you have to modify to change the roof style out to make it look like it fits in somewhat, you know?
So, so I, I can bring that certainly back to the engineering team. We can definitely add some fake windows for share onto this, on the siding. Just to kind of explain what we did with these two renders, the last time we were here, one of the comments from the board was to look at upgrading and improving the building facade materials. So in working with some architectural engineers, we came up with two drastically different material styles, the tan one being a faux brick type material, the gray one being more of a aluminum type siding, just to kind of give it more of a residential siding look. In doing so, we're kind of looking to the, to the board to see if there was a preference in the, the style facade that we can add to these buildings, from what might be more preferred. Again, like I said, we can certainly look to add some, some faux windows to these to make them look more, excuse me, more residential, like a second story, like you said.
Yeah, if you can do something with the design of the thing to make it look more like residential. I just want to underline it. There's kind of just a lot of, when you drive around, you see like some smaller operations that are, look like a house, actually. I understand this is very, can't make it look like a big house, but residentially designed electrical substation refers to a substation specifically designed to minimize visual impact and noise levels when situated in a residential area. Then it goes that, or even the whole thing, but it talks about aesthetics and so on and so forth, landscaping and somehow you guys can figure out how to make this thing fit into a residential thing, I'm sure. We do. I know, I know some of the neighbors have already been upset over, over what she had done, but I understand she can't say anything about that, but let's still make it look attractive, you know?
Right. And we do intend to add some perimeter landscaping, which I know was, I've got a comment before.
Yep.
And that'll be, you know, built out with, with the final design once we, you know, have a full grass line, you know, a full site layout and, and fence lines.
I understand. Yeah, if you can change the design of the building, a gable roof on them or something to make it look like a house, you know, or an apartment or whatever.
Is there, between these two directions from the, the boat styling, is there a preferred option, whether the fake brick look or, you know, more of a siding look? Well, we don't necessarily have to keep the gray as the color. That can certainly, you know, change if that, it's kind of the, this different point there. More of a styling aesthetic.
Well, the siding, actually, most of it is hidden because of, you know, because of the fence and so on, but.
What if they get a second story and you see the siding?
Yeah, yeah. Ordinarily, a building, there's a structure going up and a building going up and it's in the open. It would be a brick or somewhat of, you know, a designing material, you know? That just, you know, I'm just saying. All right. I don't know what the extenders, how far you can go with something like that, but.
Right now, you're showing vinyl, Sam?
It, it would be not necessarily vinyl, but like a faux vinyl. Obviously, we have to keep in mind the types of materials that are within the electrical substation itself, so it would be designed in a way to look that way, but utilize the materials we can efficiently use in association.
That's what we're thinking, maybe. Yeah. To help get it all, there's something we can.
Yes.
Something we can show neighbors, because there are neighbors that are going to be, since they're already, we'll check up on them. Just if you, again, seven, ten times, just a gable on it, something to dress the roof up instead of just a flat roof.
Okay.
You know? I think that's a simple for you to do, something like that.
Okay.
All right, that would, that would make a big improvement on that actually.
I have a question. Is that fence, is that six foot or is that taller than six foot?
It's a, it'd be an eight foot fence.
Will there be, will there be a barbed wire on the top?
No barbed wire on the top, but per style of fencing.
No broken glass, you know, it's just a nice fence.
This, yeah, this, this rendered image gives you a little bit, a little bit of a better perspective that there is some gaps in that, the slats of the fence, so it's not a solid black look.
Yeah, the fence looks fine. I, I think that's okay. It's just what's above it. Check this, that tree. Check. It's a compound. Okay, good enough.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's all just. Just to know.
Do you need to study a return date for them or?
No, that's up to them. They're just real library. We got a table over there. It's just a sketch. A sketch for a full meeting.
Last item on tonight's agenda, McHepplin Industries, located on Publishers Parkway. Applicant Matt McHepplin is requesting sketch plan review associated with the proposed construction of one hundred and twenty thousand square foot of manufacturing warehouse, tractor trailer loading docks, parking utilities, and other associated amenities on a twenty-five point six acre parcel located in an office park zoning district under section two sixty-nine dash five of the code of the town of Webster.
Gentlemen. Good evening. First and foremost, I just want to bow to the board that we plan to plant a building up that doesn't look like a prison. I'd like to take a couple of minutes just to explain who we are and what we do. My name is Matt McHepplin. I'm the president and CEO of McHepplin Industries. I'm a lifelong Webster resident, grew up here. My wife grew up here, raising our two kids here. I'm heavily involved in the community, especially youth sports, and just love the idea of our company having a footprint in my hometown. We are a precision sheet metal fabricator, so we offer our customers a wide variety of capabilities. We cut metal, we form it, we weld it, we paint it, and then we also offer warehousing capabilities for our customers. We're celebrating our sixty-first year milestone next month. My grandfather started the company back in sixty-four. In the early sixties, he decided to leave the family dairy farm here on the Salt Road and start a new career, and that's how he started the business in sixty-four. That's a, it's a heck of a story. If you catch me outside here, I might tell you. We're also a veteran-owned small business. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. We also have a very strong culture. We hire for culture first and we hire for skill set second. We believe if you fit our culture, we'll find something for you to do here. We also, for a company our size, we have a high level of sustainability efforts. A company our size, you may be surprised to hear that we track our carbon footprint. Not a lot of companies do that, at least our size. And we're also heavily involved in the communities where we, where we currently are. We have a facility in the northern portion of the city. We're also in Miss Rochester and, and Waller. And I won't get into everything that we do, but I'll just highlight one of our, our big events is our annual charity golf tournament, where we raise funds for local homeless veterans as well as cancer patients. So it's been, it's been a long road to get to where we are here today. We identified that we needed more space to support our growth well over a year ago. I think it was maybe probably about a year ago now where I reached out to Matt Chatfield and spoke with him and Tom Flaherty, put me in touch with, was it Josh, Josh Schutso? And we, we started the search for, for property. And the long story short is this is the one that we're a little loose, but it's been a long road to get to where we are, but we're excited to be here. So also probably today, our partners with Acostic Engineering, Mike Ritchie, which he's doing double duty tonight. And he's going to go over the site plan a little bit with you, but a couple of things I wanted to point out. This is going to be a three-phase approach. Our immediate demand is the first building, which is one hundred and twenty thousand square feet, which we have designed beyond the most southern portion of the property. We believe that that facility will create about twenty to twenty-five new jobs. And then as we continue to grow, we would add to that facility going north. And if you take a look at going from the, from the bottom of the rendering there to the north, there's also a piece of property of the far north portion, about four to five acres. That's being left untouched. That's intentional. Preliminary discussions with the town is that there's interest in maybe partnering on something on that property. I believe a library was brought up at one point. We're, we're very interested in creating a long-term partnership with the town and we're very interested in continuing those conversations about how that property can be used in the future. Lastly, you know, one thing that we do in terms, we have an internship program, an apprenticeship program as well, and we work with local trade associations, local high schools. We also work with Webster High School. And when we take a look at this property and what we're trying to do to create more awareness of manufacturing in the area, it just seems like it's a great opportunity and even a responsibility to continue our, our education program and put an education center in so we can bring in young students and get them more interested in manufacturing. So that's, that's our intentions. We're very excited about it. Again, we've got Mike here from Acostic to answer any questions and, I'll turn over the mic.
Thanks, man.
Thanks.
Again, this is sketch plan, so we're here to introduce the project and receive feedback that you have so that we can apply that to our formal planning board application. So what we are proposing, phase one, as Matt said, is one hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and that's along the south side of the property, kind of the darker portion of the building in the rendering there. And planning for the future, they hope to be successful as they've already been, so we're planning for a full future build out of up to three hundred thousand square feet, which we've shown in two additional additions there going north. On our plan, we're showing an access off of the, I guess, recently constructed access off of Clem Road that was built for the U of R facility. That access road is actually on McHepplin property, so they would propose to extend that from where it's ended now into the site. We are also, at this point, showing a second access on the Publishers Parkway. We've been discussions with Matt. It certainly would not be needed in the first phase, and that would be something that would be considered for future phases. We did receive comments from the PRC. Those two comments were related to traffic and requesting that a traffic study be prepared. And the second one was that we show future phasing, we can clearly indicate what's going to be built first and what's for later. So getting back to the, the traffic study comment, a traffic study was prepared for this property a handful of years ago when an application came in for a senior living facility. The traffic study at that time did not recommend any improvements to the highway infrastructure then. You know, if, if this board and town staff feels that, I guess, another look back at that traffic study is warranted, we could do that, but I would just let everybody know that based on Matt's understanding of what they'll need when this starts up, the first phase is anticipated, there'll be sixteen employees over two shifts with roughly forty coming in in the morning shift, which is at six AM, and then the other twenty coming in later in the day. So when we talk about traffic, usually that hundred trips per hour is kind of the threshold for warranting a traffic study. And certainly in this first phase, we know we're near that. I think we would be more than willing to maybe make that condition for future phases needing that, because obviously we don't want to cause a traffic issue, but that's something that we can work with town staff. I believe that might have been the town engineers' comment, who issued that comment to begin with. So again, we've done some preliminary engineering. We have a survey done on it. We've looked at drainage. Utilities are available for the property. As I had mentioned, the front four to five acres are going to be left undeveloped, left as woods for now. You know, we believe this is a, a good use of the property and some other things I would want to know as well. Matt did go before the town board back in November, I believe it was. This project will require a special use permit. It is in the OP North Core District, so it requires a special use permit for the manufacturing use. And additionally, this project will require variance from the zoning board, because I believe code states maximum building square footage permitted in the district is forty-five thousand square feet. So those are, we haven't applied to the zoning board yet. Again, trying to introduce the project to the planning board and see what comments you do and if we can incorporate those one more.
How long do you think this project would take to complete?
Good question. The first building is really immediately. We're looking to be in that building mid-twenty-six. The next two buildings, that's, that's undetermined at this point. Depends on how quickly we grow, as well as maybe other needs, and what we do with other facilities. It could be four years, it could be ten years, I'm not sure, but I want to make sure that we have that flexibility to support our growth, because one thing that's constant in our industry is always, it's always changing and you've got to move quick or you're going to, you're going to miss the opportunity.
And what if, you know, we thought it was important to not just show the one hundred and twenty thousand square feet, but the, you know, plan for the future so that infrastructure can be put in the ground to accommodate, you know, future impervious areas and roof areas. So that's, that's why we're showing, I also, uh, usually want to do that for procedural purposes.
How many loading docks?
We're, uh, the first phase, I believe, is three loading docks and then showing, uh, four additional.
Yeah, it's, I believe it's two docks with a, with one ground loading dock.
And in the course of the day, how much traffic can you generate in the trucks you show?
On average, maybe, maybe three trucks a day.
So that's what I'm getting, so it's minimal.
Yeah, very. And as, I know Mike said that our first shift comes in around six. The majority are there either at six or earlier, so, um, and, and be right next to the expressways. Even when they leave at the end of their shift, there's not a whole lot of traffic in that in the area.
Does this eighteen-wheelers come in?
Yeah, probably two eighteen-wheelers and, and a box truck.
Is it driveway off of Harrod Road that goes up the Flom Institute? Is that accept, is that big enough for eighteen-wheelers?
Yeah, that's part of what we're analyzing right now. We're going to invite the county, uh, to widen that driveway to accept the, the radius for the, the semi-loading. Um, and that's something that we will, we'll show on the, on the application, the formal application.
This is not for you guys, but when you're coming into that driveway now, you're heading north on Harrod Road, there's what should be a left-hand turn lane is all painted with stripes. Is it, I don't know whether you can find out if that going to be eventually changed for to a left-hand turn lane?
I can talk to, um, the town highway and engineering department to get an answer for you.
Thank you.
I don't see anything that. Let's just use this the other way, what was the pro, originally? Was that it was for townhouses?
Have they seen your living facility at the end?
Yeah, that would have been a zoo.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That would have been a zoo.
It would have been, yeah.
With that much traffic in and out of there. This, if anything, minimizes a lot of traffic in the area. It's an established business, they've been in town for, is that many years? Could you rephrase it, Frank?
Yes. And my, and my grandmother is still here in Webster.
Yep, I know.
I'm assuming all these vehicles, they'll just be, and, and when they come out of Harrod Road, they'll be going right up to Wild Forest, so they won't be actually going down into the residential areas.
Yeah, right. Yep, you're right. So it's close to the expressway, you're not traveling through residential areas with it. I guess the next step is proceed forward.
Great, thank you. Great.
Looks good.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask a question? Is it, is it appropriate? Oh, I just, my, yeah, I live right on the corner of Hepscher.
I know you live right across from it.
Debbie, they seen, uh, corner Harrod and Publishers Parkway. Um, my question is, the road that is on Publishers, the little road? No one's going to be using that, no trucks are going to be using that?
Yeah, so, uh, so this was a little bit of older rendering. Um, so right now the plan is, especially the first building, is not to put that road in. So our first sketch had that in, um, we don't even think we want that in even in building two or building three. Um, when we meet with the town to figure out how they'd like to develop that, they will probably put something in for that parcel. But as of right now, the newest plan will cap that, or if.
Okay, because it's, as you know, Harrod and Publishers Parkway is a zoo from two fifteen to three thirty in the afternoon. Cannot even turn, so a truck could not even enter that. And they never do traffic studies at that time of day. And, um, every parent of a Willink and Thomas student parks their car along our whole yard both ways and waits to pick up their kids. And there's been no good answer for that. So tractor trailers and that kind of traffic would be very, very.
That was, uh, that was one of the preliminary discussions on, you know, when, when do your employees go to work?
Right. I can tell, but I mean, as far as the project goes, this is a hundred and fifty percent more acceptable than what I've seen in the past. I mean, this originally was my family's land, so I can tell you that I've seen lots of projects be presented for this area and have shuttered at all of them. And the last one especially was horrible and, uh, some of the others asked me, oh, you're going to the meeting? And, because they know I come to meetings, and I said, you don't want to oppose this. You know, I said, you really don't, because it's, it's the best fit for our really busy area.
I'm glad you're here, I've been like that. Thank you.
Very, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, then we got, we have to approve two sets of meeting minutes. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the November twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. I'd also like to perform, uh, approval of the December third, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.